Good evening. I now call to order the April 23rd, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting of the City of Calabasas. Tonight, I am joined by Mayor Protem Bazagian, council members Albrecht, Shapiro, and Weintraub, as well as city staff. If you'd like to provide public comment, please complete a speaker card and give it to our city clerk. Members of the public who need hearing assistance can request a device from the city clerk as well. Tonight, I'm pleased to share that our Pledge of Allegiance and Color Guard will be led by Troop 1586.
May I please have your attention for our flag ceremony?
Please stand for the presentation of the colors.
Color Guard, attention.
Color Guard, advance. Color Guard, present the colors.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Color Guard, post the colors.
That was wonderful. At this time, can I ask for a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Councilmember Weintraub, seconded by Councilmember Albrecht. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Oh, do we need a picture here?
You can call him back. You can call him back, take a picture.
Ask him.
Hey, Girl Scouts?
Girl Scouts.
Did you want to get a picture in here? Do you want to take just a moment and come on up front here? And we'll stand behind you?
Thank you.
Yeah. Are we getting in?
No, it's okay.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
At this time, city attorney, we did have a meeting in closed session prior to this meeting. City Attorney, do you have something to report?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. We did meet in closed session, starting at 5:30, and discussed item number two, two matters of potential litigation under Government Code Section 54956.9D2. We will need to reconvene in closed session after the open session ends to discuss item number one and then item number three on the closed session agenda. No reportable action was taken, though, on item number two.
All right. Thank you very much. So the first thing we have, next thing we have on the agenda is a presentation for an appointment to the Library Commission, interim city clerk. Would you like to present the report?
I would. Thank you, sir. Good evening, council members. Tonight, I'm pleased to provide the report for the appointment of Stephanie Adams to the Library Commission. The city's municipal code allows for each council member to nominate one commissioner to the Library Commission to serve a three-year term, subject to the confirmation of the city council. In January 2025, the city made appointments to all boards and commissions, and at that time, a seat remained vacant for the Library Commission. Mayor Protem Bazagian, sorry, sir, has selected his appointee and is recommended. The city council confirmed the appointment of Stephanie Adams to the Library Commission for a term ending in January 2028. This concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions.
All right. Thank you. Mayor Protem Bazagian, would you like to provide any comments regarding your appointee?
Yes. We had, as the city clerk mentioned, we had had appointments earlier this year, and unfortunately, my appointee, like the day before, had to step aside and did not accept reappointments, so the seats remain vacant. And we did have some applicants, and I did interview Stephanie, and I think she's very well qualified for the position. And I think her application expressed enthusiasm for the position. I think she'll do a great job, so I'm appointing her to a three-year term on the commission.
All right. Thank you. Can I have a motion to confirm Mayor Protem Bazagian's appointment of Stephanie Adams to the Library Commission for the term expiring in January 2028?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Moved by Mayor Protem Bazagian, seconded by Councilmember Weintraub? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries five zero. Ms. Adams, would you please step forward? And the city clerk will conduct your oath of office.
I stand by, please, and speak after me. Aye. Speak after me. Aye, Stephanie Adams. Do solemnly swear or affirm? Do solemnly swear or affirm? That I will support and defend? That I will support and defend? The Constitution of the United States? The Constitution of the United States? And the Constitution of the State of California? And the Constitution of the State of California? Against all enemies? Against all enemies? Foreign and domestic? Foreign and domestic? That I will bear true faith? That I will bear true faith? And allegiance? To the Constitution of the United States? To the Constitution of the United States? And the Constitution of the State of California? And the Constitution of the State of California? That I take this obligation freely? That I take this obligation freely? Without any mental reservations? Without any mental reservations? Or a purpose of evasion? Or a purpose of evasion? And that I will well and faithfully? And that I will well and faithfully? Discharge the duties? Discharge the duties? Upon which I'm about to enter? About, upon which I'm about to enter. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your service to our community and to our city.
Thank you very much. I'm really looking forward to being on the Library Commission and serving the community.
We appreciate you stepping up. Thanks. Okay, we are now on to council announcements. Are there any council announcements? I'm going to start with Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few. First off, I'd like to hope that the residents that celebrated Passover and Easter had a great, enjoyable holiday. It's very special and means a lot to so much. Valley Economic Alliance had their annual gala this past week, and it was a great fundraiser for a very worthy nonprofit. For those of you that don't know it, it serves a very underserved community and new businesses with both finances and a learning experience so their business can be successful. They really speak in large part for the growth of our valley and its future. And it was emceed by a past weatherman called Fritz Coleman, who had been in our senior center, also emceeing an event. Senior Center Volunteer Appreciation will be held this Tuesday, excuse me, next Tuesday at 11:30. Our senior center has a long history of many, many volunteers that work full-time, part-time, anytime to make that program successful. So if you're free and you want to meet some new people, it's a great place to do it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Shapiro?
Thank you very much, and I'll just start by congratulating our own Brian Cameron, and on behalf of Epic, he presented to the Southern California Association of Governments on what is, what he's doing to help with our community and what Epic is doing on behalf, in conjunction with the city, to, as far as home hardening and fire-safe communities, did a fantastic job representing. And I want to mention, I'll just mention it briefly, because I'm sure Mark's going to mention it, but May 6th is the annual Law Day in Calabasas, where anyone who wishes can get free legal consultations in specific areas. If you want to register for a 30- to 45-minute consultation, please contact the Chamber of Commerce to set up an appointment in multiple areas of law. And that's held on May 6th from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m. at our own Calabasas library. And last but not least, because I don't think we meet till after, on May 11th, I'll wish a very, very happy Mother's Day to all those mothers out there, and thank you, or we would not be here. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Weintraub?
All my announcements have been taken, so I wanted to just make sure that I reference that tonight begins Yom Hashoah, which is the anniversary that six million Jews were murdered during the Holocaust in cold blood, and that is a time when hatred and dehumanization convinced half of a continent that the genocide of the Jewish people was not just acceptable, but righteous. And today and every day, remember, not just those that were murdered, but we also remember the heroism of those who rescued, those who resisted, and those who survived. And I also wanted to acknowledge the people that are still held in captivity, especially one in particular, an American from New Jersey, Naomi Dawn Alexander. And I know that we're hoping that the words "never again" really do happen at some point. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Yes. Thank you, Alicia. I was actually going to reference that myself. I just was verifying who I was adding. I know that we don't always have proclamations and things, but I think it's important to recognize these days and these months, because as many times as we say, you know, and people acknowledge them, these events keep happening over and over again, and we keep getting reminded that even though people sometimes pay lip service to them, they don't follow in the footsteps of what the spirit of these months are. And so we should be aware that it's genocide, Holocaust, Remembrance Month. I did want to add as well, there are others who have experienced these kinds of pogroms historically that have also happened more recently. I mean, you can look at what's gone on in Ukraine. You can look at, in my own background, the Armenian genocide is remembered. Tomorrow will be the 110th anniversary of the onset of the Armenian genocide, and we just saw a couple of years ago, the invasion of Armenia and the ethnic cleansing that went on in one of the provinces by Azerbaijan. So it doesn't matter what your ethnicity is, you should all be aware of and sensitive to these issues, and you can't talk about it often enough, because as we've seen in recent years, whether it's October 7th, or whatever it is, it just keeps happening. And some people try to apologize for it, or say, we shouldn't talk about it, or it's too much emphasized, and I kind of disagree with that. I think we don't emphasize it enough. So thank you for bringing it to our attention, Alicia. I don't have any other announcements at this time.
All right. Thank you, council, for all of your announcements. I'll add a few more from our city calendar, just to share with the public some things that are going on. We do have our Pumpkin Patch Storytime at the Library is tomorrow. If you want details on that, you can find that on our website. We also have a series of hikes going on, and there's one coming up on May 3rd, hiking the Chesapeake Canyon Trail as a community, if you want to come join us. I tried to get my wife to join us, but the 7:15 a.m. start time doesn't agree with her. And also, I want to mention that the first Saturday of each month, we have an e-waste collection at the Albertson's parking lot, so let's make sure that we're not putting things into the landfill that shouldn't be there. And with that, that's the end of my announcements. At this point, we'll go on to public comments. Now is the time for general public comments for items not on the agenda. Each speaker will be asked to state their name and the city they live in, and will be allowed three minutes to address the city council on items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. The council is unable to respond due to state law, which prohibits the council from addressing any issues not on the agenda, but we are listening. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on non-agenda items? You can fill out a speaker card. I have one here so far. It's from Mark Levinson, if you'd like to come on up and address us.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Mark Levinson, I reside in Los Angeles. I'm here on behalf of the Calabasas Chamber of Commerce. We have a lot of things coming up within the next month or so, so I'll just go through some. On the 24th, we have a breakfast at Lovey, sponsored by Fair Winds Retirement Community. I recently had the privilege of attending one of their seminars at their location and getting a tour. It's quite a facility, and anyone interested should call them for a tour. On April 28th, Government Affairs Committee, it's by Zoom, it is 12 to 1:00 p.m. It's quite informative. We have, as you know, representatives of the different politicians and community leaders throughout the area. And then on April 30, the Women's Group is meeting at Onta Hotel, and we have the privilege of having Gloria Romero, who is a state senator, author, and professor, speak. And she's going to speak on an interesting topic, can you succeed and still be pleasant? And it's a well-attended individual event. We are very, very happy to have the state senator speak on our behalf. On May 6th, as Councilman Shapiro mentioned, is Law Day. We're meeting just outside the library. Anyone interested in a spot to explain whatever your problem is, please call the chamber office. The chamber is also going to thank all of our assisting attorneys by saying, we're going to provide you with lunch, and so thank you for volunteering your time. And I know that Mayor Protem Bazagian and Congressman Shapiro will be present, so thank both of you. And then on May 9th, is the 26th Annual Wine Event, which is being held just outside of City Hall here. Again, I want to thank Mayor Protem Bazagian, who allowed us yesterday to go through a lot of older pictures of people and events throughout the city. The chamber is going to be seven years old, which is actually older than the city, and Jim, thanks for your time and effort in that regard. And basically, that's it. So thank you for your attention, and I look forward to seeing you at these events. Thank you.
Okay. Having no other public comment cards, we're moving on to the consent calendar. Do any of my colleagues wish to pull on the items from the consent calendar? I'll move the consent calendar?
I'll second that.
Moved by Councilmember Shapiro, seconded by Councilmember Weintraub. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar? Aye. Motion carries five zero. And now we're on to a public hearing. The Business Registration Program continued from February 26, 2025. Community Development Director Klein will present the report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. We are requesting that this item be continued, again, to a date uncertain. At the last meeting, we requested to continue it to start working with the chamber on outreach with the business community, and the chamber graciously hosted a town hall meeting on April 13th. From that, it generated a handful of questions and comments that staff needs to research and keep looking into, and to have those continued conversations. So we'd like to continue this to a date uncertain, and we'll bring it back after we issue a new public hearing notice.
I don't think we need to vote on that, but having no objections? It is continued to a date uncertain. The next item on our agenda, then, is the designation of fire hazard severity zones. Also presenting will be Community Development Director, Michael Klein.
Good evening, and I am also joined tonight by our emergency services manager, Mike Dyer, as well as our building official, Sparky Cohen. And we also have someone from the Fire Department as well, I believe the Forestry Division, to answer any specific questions from the Fire Department. I don't have a PowerPoint presentation, but to summarize the staff report, the state Fire Marshal has issued fire hazard severity zone maps for all cities within the Southern California region. And under the government code, once they have issued those, or established those, fire hazard severity zones, the city is obligated to adopt that map. So what we're asking the council to do is to introduce, conduct the first reading, and introduce the ordinance to adopt the map, and then we will forward that on to the Forestry Division, to CAL FIRE, actually. And just as a quick background, the, under the state law, once the Fire, once the state Fire Marshal has adopted the fire zones, the city cannot decrease those zones, but a city can increase the zone if they want to. That being said, the entire city of Calabasas has been designated as the high fire severity zone, so there's really nothing else to change. It's already at the highest level. What does that mean? Ultimately, what that means is the building code requirements for new construction or for remodeling existing structures has to meet the highest fire code standards, as well as defensible space standards. So really, what it will require is for construction throughout the city to meet those highest building code requirements. I also noted that the triannual building code updates are being processed right now at the state level, and we'll be bringing that forward to council later this year for adoption to go into effect January 2026. And the final thing that I'll note is that the last time the state Fire Marshal designated the fire hazard severity zones was in 2007, and at that time, they also included the entire city of Calabasas in the very high fire severity zone. So nothing is actually changing for any of our residents. All parcels will be subject to the current fire code requirements, and they'll continue to be subject to those fire code requirements. Technically, the only thing that has changed in the map was the addition of Mont Calabasas, because in 2007, it was not part of the city. Now it's in the map, but it still retains the same high fire severity zone. And again, I do have Sparky Cohen, who can answer specific questions about the building code requirements, and of course, Mike Dyer, who can answer other questions about fire safety.
And I'm sorry, I just have to clarify. I heard you say twice, high fire hazard. It's, we're in the very high fire hazard severity zone.
Correct. Very high fire severity zone.
Any questions from council? Shapiro?
Just a quick question for staff, or the city manager, or Mike Dyer. Would, if there is a change we would like to see in that map in the coming year, because something changes in the city potentially, would we have to go ahead and file a application? How would we go about expanding the territory currently on the map, and how long would that take?
If you're, if you're alluding to any sort of annexation effort, they have already established the local responsibility area for other areas that are under LA County jurisdiction, so I've already confirmed areas like Craftsman's Corner, for example, which is the only annexation we currently have pending, is also in the very high fire severity zone. So nothing really changes. We'd probably have to update a boundary line with the state, but that would be part of the LAFCO process.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Weintraub?
Thank you for the report. I think, given the severity of the mapping, I mean, nothing has changed, but I think it's great how many more communities have become firewise communities, and I would encourage anyone watching our meeting to get in touch with Mike Dyer, to learn more about how your community can become a firewise community, which could potentially help with insurance rates, and most importantly, just keeping you and your neighbors safe in the event of another wildfire.
Councilmember Albrecht? Anything?
Thank you, Councilmember Weintraub, for bringing that up. Very, very important, and for both of our neighborhoods, we have the Firewise certification, and I can tell you, knowing firsthand, it's not that hard. And Chief Dyer does a great job of helping magistrate the process, and the insurance companies do request the certification, and many of the insurance companies, my own included, ask for the certificate and the map. So there's three elements to submit to potentially receive a reduction in insurance. It's not a guarantee, but it really is more, the value of it is really in the home hardening aspect of it, and the insurance is a byproduct that hopefully we can obtain. So Chief Dyer, thank you for all the work you've done for all of the communities.
Mayor Protem Bazagian, do you have anything to?
Just a question on the Mont Calabasas area. There's an area that says federal responsibility. As I, as I'm reading the map, it looks like it's in the high fire zone. Is that correct?
I do believe so, although the map itself doesn't designate the federal area, the area that's under federal control.
Why, why is, aren't there other federally owned lands within the city at all?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not even, okay.
There are state, there's state-owned property.
There's state, yes. Well, so this federal designation, so any federal land then would not be our responsibility to maintain? Is that what it is?
Yes, and maybe there's a size, there's a size criteria, because possibly there's some federal land that might be smaller and hasn't, doesn't rise to the minimum size that they would use to sort of parcel out of the map.
Okay.
And I had nothing to comment on myself, but as long as Mayor Protem Bazagian brought it up, I do want to remind everybody that if you're budding up to National Park Service or other publicly-owned land, and your clearing area extends into those lands, it's still your responsibility to maintain that 100-foot, or whatever your clearance requirement is around your structures, and you can reach out to those organizations and get a permit to enter their lands to do those sort of clearings. So we all have to be aware of the budding parcels to our land as we try to make them as fire-safe as possible. And with that, I have no other comments or questions. Do we have an action item on this? We have to, this is the first of two approvals? Is that right?
Yeah, if, if the council conducts the first reading and introduces the ordinance, it'll come back for a second reading and final adoption.
Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? I will now open the public hearing. City clerk, do we have any? Seeing none, I now close the public hearing. Does the council have any further comments? No? If not, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Weintraub, seconded by Councilmember Shapiro. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None? Motion carries five zero. Do, city clerk, do we need to restate the, do we need to read this? Is there anything else here we need to add to the record?
It'd be good to read the title into the record.
Okay. We have now agreed to introduce and conduct the first reading of Ordinance Number 2025-413 to designate fire hazard severity zones, and also to, to direct staff to schedule a second reading and adoption for the May 7th, 2025 city council meeting. Okay, with that, we have no other continued business. We have no new business, and so now we are on to oral reports from the council. Councilmember Weintraub?
Just wanted to, if we could just provide a quick update on the signs that we voted on at our last meeting. I know that members of the public are anxious to know about that.
I'm happy to take that, council member.
Thank you.
The, the signs are being manufactured in the state of Arizona, and they'll be shipped out today, and they will arrive on-site on Friday, and with installation beginning that same day.
Great. Thank you so much, and appreciate the great work that staff did to get these here quickly, and that they'll be installed.
Mayor Protem Bazagian?
I am, I'm going to be attending the League of California Cities State Board Meeting in Sacramento later this week, and I guess I have a couple of future agenda items, but that's one. The other thing I would say is that, and Mark Levinson had alluded to this, the Chamber of Commerce is planning its 70th anniversary celebration later this year, and we'll be invited to join them in some of the celebrations they're planning, and we are right now going through some older historical documents in preparation. And we are right now going through some older historical documents in preparation for bringing that to the community. That's it.
Okay. Councilmember Shapiro?
Just mentioning, next week I'll be attending the SCAG General Assembly and representing the City of Calabasas and our COG at that general assembly, and joined by others, hopefully. I was going to make a joke about the Arizona, but I won't. Thank you.
Councilmember Albert?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few. Met with the Finance Committee this morning for the Clean Power Alliance. And again, it looks like rates are going to be in our favor, that we're going to make a decision in May, but so far, so good. And we also have a full board meeting next week, which I'll be attending. Budget Standing Committee is meeting Wednesday, April 23rd. Excuse me. I wish I had that date right, but it is in May. We're meeting twice, so we're not completed on that yet. Hopefully, bring it to council in June. LA 28, our ad hoc committee, that we're excited about, preparing for that. Our meeting is on Monday, the 28th, coming up. And Chamber Government Affairs is also that morning. It's a great event. It's a Zoom. And those of you that would like to attend, you can receive the invite by going to the Chamber website. It's a great conversation between the senators, assemblymen, sharing Q and A about the bills and what the status is on a statewide level, as well as local. That's my report.
All right. And I do have a few things to report myself. You mentioned LA 28. I do want to report that on April 5th, I had the opportunity to meet with Mayor Karen Bass and other invited mayors from all over the Southern California area, talking about LA major events, including the LA 28 Olympics, the World Cup, and other events that'll be here in our cities. And it was a meeting about collaborating and how other cities can get involved. And the one thing I did share with them was that we, like many cities, rotate our mayors on a yearly basis. And it's really hard with the Brown Act for a mayor to show up and get some information when two other council members are on that committee. So one of the things that they've insisted, that they've agreed to is that in future meetings, although they do want to have the mayors attend these, they'll make sure to include a staff member, and our appointed staff member for this will be our Assistant City Manager, Scott Truhulow. So more information on that to come, and we'll certainly get our LA 28 Committee involved in that. We also had our Mayor's Youth Council on April 7th, a fantastic group of young individuals who got very involved in lots of things, including just recently, they were in attendance at our Earth Day celebration on the 12th of April, as well as several of my fellow council members I saw there. We also had our Bunny Trail, which was a very successful event that same morning. So a lot of great stuff going on here with the city. Ed did mention our Budget Committee. Our Budget Committee has met. We have now met as a public meeting twice. I see a member of our audience that was actually at our last budget meeting. It's great to have the community there and involved in participating with us, and I encourage everybody to keep an eye on our city calendar and feel free to come join us at the next one. They're riveting. And with that, that's all of my announcements.
I did forget something.
No, please, go ahead.
Two things. One is, I did attend the California Contract Cities Association Board Meeting, where they basically said farewell to our past president. Our incoming president will be installed next month. As far as League of California Cities, there are three bills they are watching at the state legislative level, and they have asked cities to at least consider taking positions on them for the public certification. One is SB 79, which would allow ministerial approval of housing developments near transit areas, which would include train depot stations, but also bus stations as well, bus stops, and perhaps some freeway areas. SB 649, which would override local ordinances involving homelessness with civil and criminal penalties, so that cities would not be allowed to enforce certain rules and regulations regarding homeless individuals. And finally, AB 647, which would have ministerial approval for certain multifamily housing developments. So all three of those bills, the League does oppose. They're asking cities to take a look at them. And I think we should, Kenan, maybe the staff can give us a little synopsis of each one that's longer than what I just stated. Thank you.
City Manager, do you have anything to report?
Just a couple of items, Mayor. In, at the end of March, the Las Vegas Municipal Water District reached out to staff asking for a letter of support. They were applying for federal funding for the Oceanwell Pilot Project. And so we were able to provide that letter of support for that funding that they're seeking. But they also expressed appreciation for all of the council members who attended the demonstration project earlier or prior to that. And then, second, just as a reminder, our next meeting will be on May 7th. Instead of, so it'll be that first meeting in May because of the Contract Cities Conference, and so we'll be meeting on May 7th.
All right, and with that, we have reached the end of our agenda. So we will now adjourn back into closed session to continue a few items that we did not get to earlier. And then after that, we will see you back here at our next special meeting of the City of Calabasas City Council, which will be held on May 7th, 2025.